Wednesday, April 14, 2021. I now call this meeting to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Ms. Karstarfin?
Present.
Mr. Bax?
Here.
Mr. Elick?
Here.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Here.
And Mrs. Segwin?
Here.
Thank you. As soon as the Treasurer has a moment and can pull up the flag, would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good job. Thank you. At this time, we will have our introductions. I would like to introduce my fellow board members, Mr. Greg Elick. Thank you. Mr. Mike Gebhardt. Mrs. Elaine Segwin. Our Vice President, Mr. Jim Bax. And I am President, Ann Karstarfin. Also, we have Ms., our Treasurer, Ms. Joy Klickinger, and our Superintendent, Ms. Anne Sloss. Thank you very much. Tonight, do we have any board recognitions?
No.
No board recognition? Tonight, we do have a presentation, and that is from Eileen Stanek from Meter Investments. Welcome, Eileen.
Yes, and if I could just give you a quick introduction for Eileen?
Thank you, thank you very much.
As you said, she's from Meter Investments. They are an investment firm that we use. They are going through a software conversion, and we are going through a software conversion. I'm not sure if all of you are aware of that or not, but we're going to start the new software come Monday. And when I was talking to Eileen, turns out they're also going through a software conversion. So our hope is that between the two, you will end up with a more readable investment report with information on that might make more sense. So I am going to turn this over to Eileen.
Well, good evening, and thank you, board members, and Treasurer Klickinger, for the opportunity to give a quick update on the district's investment portfolio and what we are seeing here in the marketplace. I will go ahead and need to be able to share the screen, please.
Okay. I'm going to make you the host, and then you can share your screen.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
And then you have to turn me back into the host when you turn off.
Okay. Hopefully, that will work. Can everyone see this?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. So let me go to full-screen mode real quick. So I know it has been some time since we've done a presentation to the board. 2020 was certainly a crazy year. But now that we are kind of back to almost a pre-COVID world, you know, Joy and I talked about this would certainly be something that we would perhaps consider doing on an ongoing basis. Joy and I do have conversations, of course, throughout the year as it relates to the district's portfolio and our investment activity, but just sharing that information in a more formal manner with the board. So what I've put together here is first, starting out with a review of the district's general portfolio. So this would be... Hold on, we have a Molly Knight who wants to enter the waiting room. Can I let her?
Please admit, yes.
Thank you. Since I'm the host, excuse me. So this screen shows, as I said, the district's general portfolio. So at the end of March, there was $20,207,000 invested in securities, $7.6 million plus in cash. And when we say cash, this refers to funds that are predominantly in the Star Ohio account, so not in the checking account of the district or any other liquid funds. But of the $20,207,000 that is invested, as we can see the asset allocation, the securities are diversified across all of the permissible investment classes under state law, as well as under the district's investment policy. And a few of these asset classes do require additional training, specifically for the Treasurer in order for the district to be able to take advantage of them. And Joy has, of course, completed that training. So that being said, when we look at the portfolio, this portfolio statistics, the investments had a weighted average maturity of one and a half years. So what that means is we have some securities maturing within a year. We have some securities maturing in two years, some in three years. On average, we average those out, they mature within just under one and a half years. Weighted average yield on the portfolio at the end of March was 1.24%. And we need to take into consideration that it's reflective of securities that have been purchased, you know, over time. And for comparison, we can compare that to the current yield on Star Ohio, which is at 0.07%, or even the two-year U.S. Treasury, which is yielding less than 0.15%. So clearly, having an investment program in place has allowed the district to benefit from us having locked in interest rates in advance of interest rates collapsing due to the pandemic. On an annual basis, the current investment portfolio will generate around $250,000 a year in interest. Now, interest, of course, is received on a monthly basis, depending on the payments that are received on the individual securities. So some months, the actual interest received may be $25,000; other months, it may be more; other months, it may be less. But on an annualized basis, it does work out to about $250,000. Now, the maturity distribution of the district's investments, as you can see, we have no maturities beyond the three-year period. And that is a function of the district's five-year forecast. So as we are collectively making those decisions to invest funds for the district, we are taking into consideration the fact that the district's five-year forecast, you know, is reflective of funds not being available to invest beyond three years. So that is a very important consideration as we want to make sure that we do not allow the district to be in a position where funds are invested beyond what their forecasted availability is. Our second slide here is the building portfolio. Now, the building funds are managed separately in a separate account from the general fund, and that is done due to the fact that the building fund dollars were derived from a bond, from bond sales. And it's important to keep those monies separate and accounted for separately. So when we look at, again, cash and investments, in this case, of course, we all know the projects are moving along very well. It's very exciting to see these new buildings in the community. So we have a significant amount of funds in cash, i.e. in the Star Ohio account. That is purposeful so that we, in essence, have funds readily available to pay the monthly expenses as they do come in from the general contractor and the like. Securities, $10.873 million is invested in the building fund. Again, we can see diversified across the asset types. Weighted average maturity is much shorter because the building project, of course, is starting to enter its final phases. Weighted average maturity is only 119 days. The yield, again, on the portfolio, the building fund dollars are yielding 0.80%. So considering that, on average, we have these securities all maturing in less than four months, we can see the effect of having been able to purchase many of these holdings prior to interest rates falling. Now, we've accumulated the amount of interest that is being earned, received, on the building fund from its inception through the current holdings. And as we tallied it up, and again, this is just on the investment side, additional monies, of course, earnings are received on cash. But just on the securities portion, the building fund did receive a little over $3.1 million of interest. And again, we have this maturity distribution down here, which shows us how those funds are invested from a maturity standpoint. And again, we can see we have a significant amount of dollars maturing here within the next three months and then going forward. Now, a couple of points that do come up always is, you know, what will be the catalyst for interest rates to rise? And so just real briefly, a couple pieces that we look at. First and foremost, when we look at U.S. Treasury yields, this gives us an indication of market rates. And we can see, of course, recognizing that we are limited by statute to five years, but limited by cash flow to three years, that we are still operating in an environment of low interest rates. And even though longer-term interest rates have increased, you know, due to statute and cash flow, we are not in a position to be able to take advantage of those. So that being said, you know, as we're reinvesting monies, you know, we are still adding value by being able to invest the funds to yield more than if they were sitting in a liquid investment option. And again, as market conditions change, we would be looking to continue that process. Now, as I said, we do have these very short-term interest rates anchored, you know, at extremely low levels. That is because the Federal Reserve controls this portion of the market. And they have been very committed to keeping the overnight rates anchored very close to zero. So as I said, what are some of the catalysts we're looking for at to see at what point will the Fed start to... Be in a position to start to increase these rates, to return them back to where they were in 2019, which would have been pre-pandemic. Clearly, consumer spending. Consumer has to come back to be able to go out and have money, spend money, and drive the economy. Consumer represents 70% of our U.S. economy. So here, just briefly, blue line, we're looking at consumer spending. We can see in total, we're back to pretty much where we were pre-pandemic. But much of that return has been driven based off of goods, money spent on goods versus on services. So clearly, as no surprise, service sector has been lagging. And we're seeing this also in the job market. So when we look at the change in what's called non-farm payrolls, significant drop when the pandemic hit. We've since have had some job growth return. But we still have about almost 10 million jobs left to be recovered. So the Fed will want to see many of those jobs replaced, labor market get back to where it was prior to the pandemic in order to feel comfortable to raising those short-term rates. And just to wrap it up, the Fed does issue a forecast on a quarterly basis, which gives us an indication of what their expectations are for things such as economic growth in the U.S., that would be the change in GDP, where they are projecting the unemployment rate to be, and then inflation as well. So when we think in terms of the Fed mandates, they are under Congress mandated to fulfill full employment and stable prices. So full employment, of course, would be the unemployment rate returning back to their longer-run averages. And inflation, i.e. stable prices, being on average 2%. So as we can see, the Fed's expectations, particularly for inflation, are that inflation will hit their target and will remain there over the course of the next three years. But the Fed is also forecasting that they would have no change in monetary policy through 2023. So that being said, as we've said previously, the Fed controls those very short-term rates, those overnight rates, until they start to change their forecast to be reflective of perhaps improved economic activity and the like. We would not anticipate that those overnight rates would move from their current levels. So that wraps up what I have here. We'd certainly welcome any questions or comments.
I have a question, Eileen. So the way we're positioned now, it seems that we're benefiting from maybe some longer holdings. If not a lot changes, the 1.4% that we received in the last year, I'm assuming we should not. Do you feel we'll get a 1.4% return moving forward if nothing changes?
That's a very good question. And, you know, very good observation that, right, the 1.4% yield is reflective of purchases we have made over the past three years. And clearly, right today, as we're reinvesting monies, it will be at lower rates. I'm going to flip back to this slide here. So as we can see, you know, a third, basically, a third, yeah, of the portfolio will be maturing and will be subject to reinvestment. And from a return standpoint, we would be... I would say it would be reasonable to expect that we would be investing those funds to yield around 0.3. So yes, much lower than the 1.24% that the portfolio is currently yielding.
So is the strategy, if it's 0.3, not to have that money tied up for a long time? Or because there's not a lot of difference between short-term and long-term?
Well, the issue that we're confronted with as we make those recommendations and have those discussions with the Treasurer on the reinvestment side, the constraint is the time period that we can go out to. So for instance, if the five-year forecast was such that, you know, it demonstrated that the district would have, you know, carryover balances, cash balances, out four and five years, then we would be able to take advantage of higher interest rates that we're seeing today. But the fact that we have to stay within three years kind of ties our hands, I guess I would say, as it relates to being able to take advantage of the full market.
What is the difference in the opportunity between investing something right now for, say, two to three years versus six months?
It is about ranges between 0.15% to 0.20%.
Oh, wow.
I know. We don't make the market, unfortunately.
So it really doesn't even matter?
Well...
We try and think every little bit matters, but those are pretty little bits.
For such a large dollar amount, it certainly is, so... Okay.
Yeah, it does. I will say this. When we look back at during, you know, the last time we had zero interest rates in the front end of the yield curve was in the housing crisis, you know. And at that time, the short-term rates were even lower than where they are today. So comparatively speaking, I would say we're not quite in a dire spot interest-rate-wise than what we experienced during the housing crisis. And I think the bright spot is the fact that, you know, the vaccines are being administered broadly. The efficacy is deemed to be, you know, very effective. And companies, businesses, and economies are looking to reopen. So the fact that we're, you know, really feeling some pain here on reinvesting is, we believe, a short-term event.
Well, I guess I've never, ever thought I'd be happy with 1.24% on 27 million. But it sounds like we're kind of ahead of the curve right now. So keep up the good work.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Okay, and then, Eileen, if there are no other questions, if you can return me to being the host? And I think you did.
Oh, perfect.
Or maybe...
Maybe not?
Maybe not, that's correct.
Okay.
If you go to My Picture, you put the cursor, and then you see the three little dots. Click on those.
Make host.
There you go.
Got it.
And so do I, thank you.
Well, thank you again, everyone, really appreciate it. Very, very much enjoy working with Joy and her staff and very honored to be, you know, serving the district.
Great, thank you, Eileen.
Thank you very much, thank you. All righty. Okay, that was a lot of information. We appreciate that. At this time, we'll move on to board member discussions. Are there any discussion items by any board members tonight?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Bax?
Sure. The... I wanted to just give you a brief fill-in on the Endowment Board of Trustees that board met last Monday night. And basically, just reviewed fund conditions over the last term, that the last six or eight months. But basically, the board is going to restart granting operations or planning to restart granting operations beginning with next school year on the, what we would call, the regular schedule, which is, which is, basically, we'll start asking for... Amy will distribute grant applications before the end of this school year to the teachers. And then they'll have, over the summer, to submit. And we'll consider those grants, we'll consider those grant applications typically in late September or early October.
Okay.
And so that's, and that's the typical schedule, but we plan to resume that for this coming year. The board is also considering a golf outing for this coming fall. Typically, we've done that. We've done, we've held that event in June, late May or early June. But that's, doesn't seem... We just don't want to do that. It doesn't seem like it's a good time to do that yet. So we're kind of, we have tentatively thinking sometime this fall, along with a possible change in venue. And we'll communicate, or I'll communicate more as we get our details put together and see how things, see how things shake out. But that would be, that would be nice if we could do that as well. So that's the latest on that, okay?
Thank you very much. Mr. Gebhardt, did you have an update as well? Did you have an update, Mr. Gebhardt?
On what? No.
I assume that you were about to say something, okay.
Oh, no.
Okay. I just, I've had several people asking about the graduation. So just hopefully, we can get some information pretty soon. People, some parents are getting a little bit antsy and asking me questions, and I don't have answers, so...
Well, Annie, we just met today with Tim and Cabinet, and we're getting another round of information from Dave Cavell Friday morning. So we should have it out real soon, early next week.
Great.
But we don't want to give out the wrong information, so we're trying to get the most accurate. But things just kind of opened up a little bit from the state. So we did, we're glad, you know, everyone's in the same boat. But we're hoping to put some things out next week.
Great, thank you so much, thank you.
Madam President, one other note on the Endowment, on the Endowment Board. We do have, we do have a few scholarship opportunities. And I was in contact with counselors there at the high school. And we've got all that information put together. And so I think we're offering, I think we're offering a total of four, total of four scholarships. And these have been scholarships that the board has offered in the past. So that information's went out, so that's also underway.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much, all right, appreciate it. Moving on to item F, meeting minutes. The board meeting minutes have been posted. So I will entertain a motion to approve the Board of Education records of proceedings for the meeting from March 17, 2021, as detail in enclosure F1. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Mike Gebhardt. May I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Elaine Segwin. Are there any questions or discussion? None. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mrs. Segwin?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye, thank you, motion carries. G is Treasurer, action items.
Okay, I only have one item this evening, and that is the donations. And we would just like to express appreciation for the gifts that are listed on the agenda.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the items recommended by the Treasurer as presented. May I please have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Greg Elick. Could I please have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Jim Bax. Are there any questions or discussion? None. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Ms. Segwin?
Aye.
And Ms. Karstarfin?
Aye, motion carries. Treasurer, other or Treasurer, report?
I don't have any other, but I would like to further comment on the comment I made earlier. And that's about our software conversion.
Okay.
We're not, we're not, like, changing software, but the software we use, the state software that we use, is requiring us to do this conversion. And it's going to be great. But, you know, I don't know if any of you have switched softwares before. So we're pretty, we're getting anxious about it. By Monday, we've been through lots of training. On Monday, we should be on this latest and greatest software. The current software we're on is actually DOS-based. So this, this, yeah.
That's old.
Haven't heard that in a while.
I know. And this moves us into, you know, user-friendly stuff, software you can use your mouse with.
Wow.
Yeah, so, yeah. And I've used that software for 35 years, you know? So I knew how to get around it, make it do what I wanted to do. And now this new, easier stuff, I have to relearn, and so does everyone else. So keep your fingers crossed. Come Monday, we'll be, we'll be on the new system.
Okay, that's wonderful.
Good luck.
Yeah, thanks, thanks.
Any OFCC or OSFC reports, reports come? Okay.
No.
Moving on to K, which is Superintendent, action items.
Thank you so much, Madam President. First, to approve the agreement of Ohio Medicaid Program Services. This is an annual approval that we do each year. Next, to authorize the three-year contract for security service with Whit Guard. And that concludes my action items.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the action items recommended by the Superintendent as presented. May I please have a motion? That was motioned by Mr. Jim Bax, I believe. May I please have a...
That was Elick.
Mr. Elick.
Oh, thank you.
Please don't call me Jim Bax.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Mr. Elick. Mr. Elick. May I please have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
There, now we're both in.
Thank you, Mr. Bax. Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I had a question. The crossing guards are supplied by Whit Guard? I read that in there.
So, yes, they, the crossing guards have... When we took that over from the city, we used Whit Guard because they were already doing the security at the high school at the time. So they provide that service for us.
Okay. Didn't know that.
Okay. Any other questions? Are we still in communications to try to partner with the city again, hopefully?
Yes, I had... Yes, I had several communications again this week, Madam President, and they are looking into it. And what Miss, Madam President's referring to is just our partnership. Most crossing guards are supplied by the city themselves in most cities. And as you know, we partnered with the city and, and helped out with that, and we're trying to partner again.
All righty, Madam Treasurer?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mrs. Sequen?
Aye.
And Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye, thank you, motion carried. L is Superintendent other. No other?
No other, but I do have personnel items.
Personnel action items recommended by the superintendent.
First of all, to approve the retirement of the following certified staff. Steve Large, who I used to work with over at Oakwood. He has 18 years in the district, but did, did work for, some of you may remember what's called Boyz Town back in the day. So he's, he's been around for quite some time, and we're sad to see him go, but wish him luck. To approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following certified staff. To approve the following district to non-district game workers for athletic services as listed below. To approve the cancellation of the supplemental contract of the following certified staff. We did not end up having a pep band due to COVID for the basketball games, that's why that's changed. To approve the retirement of the follow, following classified staff. First, we have Kathleen Raider. She has been an instructional para in the district for 30-some-odd years. It looks like about 34. And then Don Hayer, who's been with the district for 10 years for, as a utility, man in the buildings. Also, to approve the resignation of the following classified staff. To approve the appointment of the following classified administrative staff as detailed below. We found a great candidate, Jessica Alar, from University of Toledo, to finally take over Julie's position in the benefits coordinator role. And to approve the appointment of the following classified staff members substitutes. To approve the one-year limited contract for the following classified staff. To approve the unpaid leave of absence for the following classified staff. And I think that's the longest action items I had for a while in personnel. That concludes my items.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to approve the personnel items as recommended by the superintendent.
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Bax, may I please have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Elaine Sequen. Are there any questions? No, Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Sequen?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Obstained.
And Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, Superintendent report?
Yes, I do have a short report, but first of all, we just got noticed that we have served our 2,000,000th meal since the COVID pandemic started for our families out of our IRAMAR services. And I, I have to say that that is a huge feat, and, and all involved need to be kudos and pats on the back because that, they've worked very hard on that, and I know our families appreciate it. Also, we started back this week, four days a week at the elementary level, and knock on some wood, but all is going well. We've had to learn how to maneuver the, the traffic patterns all over again because we've had a while since that's been an issue, but I think everything's going very well. This weekend, every single one of our robotics teams made it to state. So we have nine teams going down to state in Marion, Ohio. So good luck to all the state robotics team members. And also, we are in the works. Mr. Kokai and Mrs. Higgins are working on our new website that will be done this summer to kick off next year. And I think a great way to kick off, let's go back to normal, let's have a new website, and hopefully, everything will, will go well. And that's all I have tonight in my report.
That's a very exciting report, thank you very much. P is Board of Education. Board members, are there any reports from the board members, which is one? If not, two is board policy, the second reading and adoption of the board policies. I will entertain a motion to approve the Board of Education items as presented for the board policies.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Gebhardt, could I please have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Elick. Are there any questions on the board policy? I know that Mr. Bax gave us a short, like, synopsis of what was going on with that at our last meeting. Are there any questions? No, okay. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Sequen?
Aye.
And Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye, thank you, motion carried. At this time, I will, I will entertain a motion to request an executive session for the purpose of, of considering the appointment or, and/or discipline of a public employee or official as, and as authorized under Ohio Revised Code, ORC Section 121-2. Could I please have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Elick, may I please have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. At this time, we will be entering into executive session.
And I'll do the roll call. Yes, okay. Mr. Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Here, whichever you'd like.
Yes.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mrs. Sequen?
Aye.
And Ms. Karstarfen?
Aye. We will be entering into executive session. It didn't say, like, any action to follow or anything like that.
And do you know, do we anticipate any action to follow?
No, there will be no action to follow.
Okay, okay, thank you.